Good afternoon, I think we're just about ready. Ms. Rodriguez, are we? Yes, we are. Okay, I'd like to call the October 2nd City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission meeting to order. Ms. Rodriguez, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Pujol, absent. Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Here.
Chair Schwartz? Here, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our preliminary matters would be the first order of business, but we're going to slightly resequence to allow Commissioner Bartlet to read a statement pertaining to his recusal on our one major item today. Ms. Brooke, did you have a particular way to handle this, or should we turn it over to Commissioner Bartlet? Commissioner Bartlet?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I know we're a little bit out of sequence today since the first item was canceled, but I did want to announce that I need to recuse myself from reviewing the project at 1298 Coast Village Road, as my firm is currently under contract with this applicant on another project. So with that, I will depart the meeting and good luck. Thank you.
Okay, we will miss you and we'll see you next week. Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. So now we'll move to our preliminary matters, back to the draft minutes of September 18th and the associated resolution number 024-14, and that's for 3435 Marina Drive. Are there any changes and corrections to these documents?
I'd just have one, I'd just like to mention, there's a slight spelling error on page
two at the bottom, Ms. Rodriguez. Beth Collins Burgard's last name should be spelled B-U-R-G-A-R-D. You have it spelled correctly elsewhere in the document, so that's the only thing I noticed. Okay, with that, back to Commissioner Thompson for a motion of approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Very good, passes unanimously, we can continue on. So at this point, I'm going to ask Ms. Brooke for any continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items.
Madam Chair, we do have one item to announce, that's the postponement of item three on your agenda today at 120 East Pedregosa Street. It was noticed by staff that we inadvertently missed one of the applications required for action on that project, so we have re-noticed that project with the correct scope of work for your October 16th agenda, so we won't be hearing item three today.
Very good, October 16th. Any other announcements under this preliminary matter item?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jordan?
Just a question, again, will you generate a new staff report, or do you want us to hold on to these?
We will have a slightly updated staff report for you, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. Okay, any announcements and appeals?
I do have a couple of announcements. One is an appeal. The project for which you just approved the resolution in minutes four on September 18th, the project at 3435 Marina Drive, a coastal development permit, was appealed, and we are looking to schedule that at a council hearing date sometime in November. And then, a very exciting announcement, which I think you are made aware of. If you didn't know, October is National Community Planning Month, and every year the American Planning Association celebrates that month. Since 2007, by naming 30 exemplary streets, neighborhoods, and public spaces, and Santa Barbara is very proud to announce that we earned the designation, State Street earned the designation as one of 10 great streets in America for 2014. And for people that want to read more information about that designation and why State Street was designated, you can read more at www-planning.org/greatplaces. And that's it for announcements and appeals.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, yes, Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been excellent coverage already, including on NPR.
Oh, great.
KC, oh, you, yes.
Good, good, congratulations, I guess to everybody that's ever been involved.
Congratulations to you.
Very good news. Okay, do we have any comments from members of the public on items not on our agenda today?
I don't have any speaker slips for that item.
Ms. Schwab, I see your hand up, did you want to come forward?
Yeah.
Okay, could you, why don't you come forward and then fill one out? We need this for the record, so Ms. Rodriguez can get you on the record. Okay, we just went a little different, okay.
Sound good?
Ms. Schwab from the Downtown Organization, welcome. I think we know why you're here, but we await your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So if it's first Thursday, then it's first Thursday downtown, so I just wanted to share a little bit, some highlights for you tonight, or for tonight. We're starting tonight with Art of the Mayor's Office. She's hosting the Artists of Scape, which is Southern California artists painting for the environment. But that just goes to 6:30, so put that high on your list. The Museum of Contemporary Art, you know I talk about this one, they're doing Requiem for a Bibliophile, which examines the library's role and vital part of society. And with the fact that our libraries just kicking off their new children's library, I thought that would be a pertinent one. Sullivan Goss is displaying the art of Dan Lutz, one of California's most distinguished painters of the 20s, 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s. You'll find Vada from Santa Barbara High School, the Visual Arts Design Academy, with 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, artists in a variety of mediums. October means New Noise, and the New Noise Festival is kicking off with the Brambles at Paco Nuevo, a female duo. Also, October also means pianos on state is kicking off this month. You'll find the pianos October 10th through the 20th, but tonight on the Marshall's patio, they're painting one of the pianos. Also musician John Lyle will be there. Just when you thought it was a good time to give up dairy, it's not. The public market brought in their store called Culture Counter, and they are doing a demo called Cheese Plate 101. On the cover you see mixed media artist Thiel Monet at Oliver and Estbig. And also, October is Epicure SB Month, so big month, and Halloween apparently. So that's all I have unless there are questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schwab. Any questions for Ms. Schwab? Thank you, a lot of exciting things going on both tonight and in general this month. Thank you, Ms. Schwab.
We'll see you there, thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to move to our one and only major item, it's a discussion item, application of Jeff Gorrell, architect for Olive Oil and Gas, applicant 1298 Coast Village Road. Ms. Brooke, are you going to be making the presentation from staff today?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will, thank you. As you mentioned, we are here before the Planning Commission, staff received a request from the applicant for this approved project at 1298 Coast Village Road, for us to consider whether the changes to the approved project are within substantial conformance with the original approval, and we are seeking the Planning Commission's input as well as the public comment on that request. Just to orient you, again, to the project sites on the corner of Coast Village Road and Olive Mill Road, it's slightly over 18,000 square feet, and it's also right on the border of city and county jurisdiction, which you see here in this purple line. To refresh your memory, the approved project by city council was to demolish the existing service station on the site and construct a three-story mixed-use building. The overall building height would be 35 and 1/2 feet as approved, and include below-grade and at-grade parking spaces totaling 36 spaces. There's 4,800 square feet of commercial space on the ground level at Coast Village Road, and it included eight two-story residential condominiums, which comprised the second and third levels. And that's where the bulk of the changes to the project are occurring, is that residential makeup, that component of the project. It also involved three modification requests, which were approved or partially approved, and the applicant will be getting into much more detail in the actual floor plan and elevations of the approved project highlighting the changes. I'll just briefly mention the modifications involved in a first-floor interior setback encroachment on the north side of the project, front setback encroachment on Coast Village Road for covered balconies on the upper floor, and a modification to allow a portion of the 10% open space for the project to be partially located on the second level. A refresher again on the project chronology, the Planning Commission saw this project in March of 2008 and approved it. That decision was appealed to the city council, they upheld the Planning Commission's approval, and then also shortly after, approved the necessary rezone and the local coastal program amendment that went with the project. When ABR granted preliminary approval in February of 2009, that decision was appealed to council's will. Council upheld the ABR's decision, did make a couple changes, and when it went back to ABR in November of 2009, the ABR considered the direction that council gave them and granted preliminary approval again with those changes. Since then, the project has been on hold due to litigation, so we haven't seen it in our review process until very recently with these proposed changes. It did go to ABR for comments for an in-progress review just in August, and they were supportive, and I'll speak a little bit more about that in a moment. So to briefly summarize the proposed changes, the applicant's proposing to reduce the number of dwelling units from eight to six. With that would also be a change in the bedroom count. The approved project had a mix of one and two-bedroom units, and they're proposing that all six units be three-bedroom units. Also, rather than having each unit be a two-level townhouse style, they are proposing that they become flats, so that four of the units are on the second level and two units are on the third level. There's no change to the commercial space. With the change in residential unit configuration and some of the private outdoor living space, there are some revisions to the northern and western elevations, which the applicant will go over. There's no overall change, no changes to the overall gross square footage. You will see in the statistics an increase in the net square footage, and that's really just through the removal of some interior walls, elimination of interior stairwells, because we're going from townhouse-style units to flats. There's elimination of some of the stairs that result in an increase in net square footage, but you won't see that change from the outside. Again, summarizing the proposed changes, on the third level, there's uncovered patios for both of those units on that level along the northern lot line. The applicant is proposing to move the required private storage space that was within the garage area to be attached to those units, so that has freed up some space in the garage, which has created some additional parking spaces. So this information was in your staff report, and I'm just highlighting a couple things here. The approved project statistics are here, and then the proposed changes in this column. Building height, no change. Again, overall net size of the building slightly increasing, but that is really just due to elimination of interior walls and stairwells, and how we calculate net square footage versus gross square footage for building size. Number of units, I covered those changes. And then, in terms of required parking, commercial, because there's no change, has the same number of spaces required, and residential required parking goes down slightly with the reduction in the number of units. They're still providing more parking than's required, actually, because, as I mentioned, by removing the storage space from the garage, they're freeing up area there to provide two more commercial parking spaces, and then still wanting to provide 17 spaces for the residential units, so for a total of two net new parking spaces within the same building footprint and envelope. When ABR reviewed this project on August 18th, it was a publicly noticed hearing, and there were, I believe, four members of the public who spoke at that hearing. The ABR was asked specifically to give feedback to staff and the Planning Commission on their opinion for these changes, and whether they found them in substantial conformance with the original approval, and they did. They also found that the new third-floor balconies or patios are an enhancement and appropriate design addition, and minutes for that ABR hearing were attached to your staff report. So our recommendation for the Planning Commission is to consider the proposed changes, which the applicant will cover in more detail, and provide input on the request for substantial conformance determination. And I would summarize those changes by being primarily internal to the building, not affecting the land use approvals in any way. It does result in the reduction of the number of units and increases the parking within the existing building footprint. There are also changes to the building elevations, which are relatively minor. We did receive just one letter today from a member of the public expressing concern about the project in general, and then we do have one request to speak by the member of the public today. And so with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant to go over the plans and elevations.
Okay, very good. Mr. Gorrell, will you be providing the applicant presentation?
I will, yes. Jeff Gorrell with LMA Architects, thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. We had to bring in our old laptop, you can't hook up the thumbnail drives anymore, so Peter's going to help me. And I'll repeat a few things that you heard from Renee, but I'm going to make this very short and very quick, they are minor changes. So you've already seen the location. Peter, if you'd go on to the next slide. This zooms you in a little bit, so you can see the gas station here on the corner. There's a residence to the north, this is their garage, this is Caldwell Banker, and this is the parking lot behind Long's here, and then of course the Montecito Inn is here. Peter? Okay, this was the approved preliminary elevations on Coast Village Road and Olive Mill Road, Coast Village Road, Olive Mill Road, and what we have changed, you'll see as I present a little further, is we lowered the second floor by a foot and a half, so that we could get some higher ceiling heights on the second floor and third floor. Peter? Okay, now this is hard to read, but what I've done, and I included these in your packet, I've circled in pink the areas to focus on. So in my substantial conformity, it's really this area and truly this area, but it's internal to the building, so I've tried to highlight any external changes. What we have done, this is the preliminary approved plan, and I've straightened that wall out, and then removed these, we lost two of these storage units for the residence, and I've relocated the other two. Peter? Moving up to the second floor, now, we're in the process of working on some floor plans, but these are the blockouts. We now have, we had eight units here, and then you had stairs going up to the third floor where the bedrooms were. It makes more sense for marketing and for the market today to make these flats, so you don't have stairs. We've added, well, there's the elevator here that used to come up to the courtyard that accessed all eight units. We now have that same access for four units, and then you go into a stair, and you can go up the stairs to the third floor. On the third floor, there are two units, for a total of six, and there's an elevator that would also take those folks up. Peter? Back up one second if you would, Peter. On the second floor, you'd notice that comparison with the preliminary approved, we've got patio over here, and I'm still using a patio for one of the flats. We had a patio here with a roof above, and then there'll be some changes along this side and this side. Peter? Third floor, these are single-flat units, single-flat units, and the area of focus is like here off of Olive Mill, the same elevation, we reduced that patio by a little bit, and have given them another patio in the back that has these wonderful mountain views. For this unit, we've provided them a patio, again, with beautiful mountain views, and there'll be some changes along the perimeter of this elevation. Again, Coast Village Road and Olive Mill Road essentially stay the same, other than this floor heights lowering on the second floor. Todd? So here are comparisons of the preliminary approved and the substantial conformity determination that we're looking at. You can see from the Olive Mill side, they're essentially the same. This lowers by a foot and a half, if you look closely, it's hard to read. Coast Village Road, the same. If you look at the distance between that balcony and there, it reduces some, and we think that's actually an added element to the pedestrian experience by coming down a foot and a half. That'll help that. Todd? Moving to the other two elevations, this would be the north, this faces that north residence and the garage. Garage is aligned here, and the residence is about here, and so in the preliminary approved elevation, you can see here, so this is the focus here of the mass, bulk, and scale that the ABR was looking at. Off of this corner, from the north, we had a roof here, and this was all structure. We're now having the patio here, and you can see it reduces the mass of that third floor. Same for this portion of the elevation, you've got a patio here, and again, that reduces the mass on that elevation. Moving over to the west, this is facing Caldwell Banker and the Long's parking lot, this was the elevation. There's some changes, but essentially you can see it's roughly the same in the back, same, same. We have a roof here, and we've changed to a patio off of this side. Todd? And this is a, since the front patios are a question, I'll point out the scale between the car here you can see and the trees that are conditioned to remain. And this is the house that you see right here in the front. And then we go over to the Long's parking lot, and we look back to the residence, and that's the garage that's there, and that's that group of ficus trees. Todd? So I did a, just a quick cut here to show the ABR and the view corridor. If you go off into the distance, if one, worst case, if a person were to stand at the edge of the patio up here, and with the trees and the house, you're looking over it, there really isn't anything that you could, you can't see that window down this low. And just on the other side of this wall is the patio for this unit. And the same story, the view corridor goes well over the property, and again, there's nothing to look at down here, and I don't think most people are standing at the edge and looking down, you're looking out. And this is the type, I thought this is a good example here, of the type of patio that we'll be putting up there, and as you can see, your eye wants to go off in the distance, not down. Todd? And then, just quickly to go over some of the comparisons between the preliminary approval and a substantial conformity determination, I've just listed these such that the public open space is equal, equal, commercial is equal, equal, hasn't changed, the residential has changed, that's gone up about 724 square feet, and Renee did a good job of explaining why, and it's all internal, with the removal of stairs, sound walls, patio readjustments, and so forth. The private outdoor space for both exceeded the minimum required, and we remain to exceed that minimum by a lot, and the building heights remain the same, at 35'6". And I just explained, as Renee did, how we achieved that with the net square footage, and the parking increases by two. I was able to achieve that, as pointed out, by relocating that storage space in the first ground floor commercial area. But I would point out that we're not utilizing those extra two spaces for the commercial. What we'd like to do is, for the three top residential units, we'd like to have three cars for each of those units, and then there will be two cars for the others. And I think that might be it, if you'd go one more. Well, ABR minutes, you've had those in your packet, and as Renee mentioned, so I don't need to repeat this, the majority of the board were very comfortable with these being minor changes and fit well within the realm of substantial conformity, and I hope that you feel the same, and I'm here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorrell. And I think we have a speaker slip from a member of the public. While Ms. Brooke is bringing that up, I just want to remind us all to the purpose of today's hearing, a thank you by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission will not take formal action on this item today, and this is right out of our staff report, so I'm just reiterating for everyone's point of reference, where their staff is to receive input from the Planning Commission and the public, and the community development director will make the final determination on this substantial conformance determination, and if the project is found to be in substantial conformance, the applicant may proceed to the Architectural Board of Review for project design and final architectural approval. So with that, we have two public speakers. so I'm just reiterating for everyone's point of reference. Their staff is to receive input from the Planning Commission and the public, and the Community Development Director will make the final determination on this substantial conformance determination. And if the project is found to be in substantial conformance, the applicant may proceed to the Architectural Board of Review for project design and final architectural approval. So with that, we have two public speakers, and you have two minutes each. Mr. Ed Edek, did I pronounce that correctly?
Close.
Tell me how to pronounce that.
Edik.
Edik, okay, E-D-I-C-K. And Mr. Edik will be followed by Jim Fabio.
So my name is Ed Edik. I am a neighbor on Coast Village Road. I own a business at 1250 Coast Village Road, a half a block away. I have followed the project for the last six years and have had a number of conversations with Mr. Gurrell. And while I have been a fan of this project from the beginning, I think it's a beautiful building, I am impressed with the changes because I think they're even more appropriate for that Coast Village Road site. And I continue to support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Our next and final speaker is Mr. Jim Fabio.
Thank you. I've submitted a letter as well. I just want to make sure that-
Yes, we just did receive it. Thank you, Mr. Fabio.
Ms. Chairman and members of the committee, my family and I live at 100 Olive Mill Lane in Montecito, in a house that has been in our family since the 1960s. We sit on a bluff about 100 yards behind the property in question. If you had looked at that photo saying, where these nice views look out straight into openness, as an example, our house sits there, not down next to, but we sit straight out. We'd be looking right in the back, right at those folks standing on their balconies. We'd be saying hello to them. So that's where we live. Three stories has always been much too large for this location. It always has been. And while the developer has reduced the elevation slightly within the building, the City Council, I believe, and perhaps your organization, I don't remember, in all of those reviews that happened six and five years ago, had instructed applicant to reduce the size and scale and to scale the northern part of the building down into the residential neighborhood, to the one-story residences, three of them, and then they continue on up Olive Mill Road. While this is a beautiful building, always has been, it is too large for the property in question. And many of us who've lived there for some time think so, and many of the new neighbors who've come into the neighborhood recently also agree. The new design is not a significant change. If anything, you saw it increases square footage, and it does not reduce in height. The bulk and scale have not been reduced, as applicant was instructed by the city. And, you know, as my uncle used to say, you can't cut the legs off an elephant and hope to fit it into an elevator. You know, it's something that just doesn't work there. You have to find something else. What I and my neighbors would encourage the city to do is send the developer back to the drawing board, come back with something else, preferably two stories instead of three. And I think you will find that the neighbors will be much more accommodating to this development.
Thank you, Mr. Fabio.
You're welcome.
Okay, that concludes public comment. I'm gonna bring it back to the commission now for questions of staff and/or the applicant. Let's start with questions. Mr. Jordan, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Renee, the only question I have is just more anecdotal than actual. So we're pegging the parking off the units, so the actual requirement went down. But he's adding, actually adding more parking, which is a really good thing. But I'm just wondering, when you have three-bedroom units versus a mix of one- and two-bedroom, anecdotally, does, you know, other than the statistical measurements we use, it says, oh, now you need less parking, is, does the parking use actually anecdotally increase for three-bedroom units rather than a mixture of one and two?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, that's a good question. I don't know if I have the expertise on staff in the Planning Division to answer that. That would be a good question for transportation staff who is not here. And I realize you're asking anecdotally.
Right.
But I wouldn't want to guess.
I didn't think I'd get a good answer, really, because I'm really looking for something that's more anecdotal. But do you want to just do questions? Do you want to sneak in comments real quick?
Let's do questions. We'll see how far-ranging they are just for now, and-
That's good for me, then. Thanks.
Yeah, for both. None for the applicant at this time? Okay. Other questions? Mr. Camp- Okay. Yes, Mr. Thompson, please.
I don't remember all of the conditions from when this was approved back in '08, but the trees, the row of trees to the north was a big discussion point for privacy and visibility issues to the north. So my question is, since they are living trees, who's responsible to replace them when they die? Is that the homeowner association? Is that a condition that's written in there that the trees will be maintained as a visual sight screen?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson, I'm looking through those conditions. There was a condition from City Council back to ABR that the existing ficus trees along the northern property line continue to be maintained to buffer the parking area from the adjacent residential zoned lot. So to get to your question, we do typically have CCNRs that we'd like to review for the condominiums, for the HOA, which does have our standard requirement in it that they are required for, to carry out the landscape maintenance on the approved landscape plan.
So as long as the trees are included on the landscape plan, then if three or four of them die due to the drought or something like that, then the HOA is required to replace them-
Correct.
-like-for-like? That might help Mr. Fabio's issue to some degree, since trees tend to grow, which would help produce a little bit better privacy screening to the north. I remember six years ago, so that was a big discussion item. So I assume it's still a concern for some of the neighbors. Thank you.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have a question about the ficus. From looking at the plans, it's hard to tell in this reduced version. It looks as if the planter is being increased to a depth of four feet, eight inches. Is that, that's what I was able to decipher from the plan. And I wondered how wide it is, or how deep it is now, and how much of an increase that is. Because I think that's going to be important in terms of the ficus remaining.
Commissioner, the, it's going back a while for me, too. But I know the depth of the planter did increase, and we had an arborist report that upholds the layout. It'll actually help to improve the trees, widening the planter. And then during construction, there'll be an arborist on site to monitor the cut as we go down for the basement and direct any root cutage and so forth. So they, and it is in the resolution to keep those trees.
Okay. That responds to what I was going to ask next, is, you know, what kind of protection there is for the trees as excavation is done for the basement?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is, has been provided for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I had another question. I can't imagine transportation wouldn't have weighed on on this, but I assume that the building is set back far enough and that the layout is such that a future roundabout will have adequate space as far as that corner is concerned.
Commissioner Lodge, if you're referring to the required public improvements on this corner, the applicant-
No, I'm referring to the amount of space that will be needed if, or if a roundabout goes in.
Right. I haven't seen the plans for the future roundabout, but should there need to be any changes to these public improvements, I think we would-
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
-that before the plans are approved and permits issued for that. I guess I can't answer your question, because I haven't seen the plans for the roundabout, but in any event, we would make sure that that works.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, before I ask mine, Mr. Campanella, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for the applicant on the fourth exterior elevation.
Is your light on?
Pardon me. For the applicant, the north elevation on the current proposal, there's a question. There are now two balconies that I see on the level three?
That's correct.
Okay. And previously, they were not there. The, make sure I got this correctly, the east portion of the building, it appears that some of the building mass has been set back a little bit because of that balcony, which is now open. Is that correct, from what was approved?
There was, from the east elevation off of that corner, there was a roof above the second level deck. And now it is a patio, and the building does cut back further away from the east.
And there's no cover on that patio, so that's open. So that's set it back a bit.
Right.
On the western side, if I can, of the western portion of the building, north elevation, there's an open patio there, too. It seems like that's a little bit of a trade-off. The balcony's open, but the building extends over to the west side a little bit. So that's probably a trade-off between the two as far as size, bulk, and scale, as I can-
I think I didn't follow your first question. My answers were of the west balcony first.
Okay.
So it does, the building does move further away from the westerly property line.
Okay. So it seems a little more open if I look at it. And to the north elevation he's built, is that separation to a courtyard? The building, the two portions of the building that face north, there's a separation between the buildings?
That's correct. There's a paseo through to the-
Paseo in there. Okay. No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campanella. I just have a few questions here. I'm just gonna write through the staff report. It's easiest for me to do that sequentially. So first, Mr. Gurrell, I wanted to understand the reconfiguration as to why all six now are three-bedroom units with your proposed three cars parked per townhouse.
Well, that's a, that's a good question. And the reason we asked for three was to maximize what I would be able to do. I'm in the midst of working out those floor plans now, and they're not going to be, each one is not going to be three. I'm about halfway through and at the second floor level, and I've got a one-bedroom with a den. And then in the corner unit facing Olive Mill and Coast Village Road, I will have two bedrooms and a den. And I suspect that that same pattern is gonna follow through on the westerly second-floor units, as they're similar square footages. And then on the third floor, I expect to have three bedrooms there, or two very nice bedrooms and a den, something along that line. But they're not designed yet.
So of, within this decrease from eight units to six, it sounds like the number of bedrooms per unit is still in flux. Would you characterize it that way?
It will still be in flux.
You're still working that out and talking with staff, because we have a different description in our staff report today. That's what I'm wanting to understand.
That's correct. And it's just, it's just a matter of asking for the maximum. And then we wanted to get through this substantial conformity process before spending a lot of money getting all of the floor plans worked out.
Okay. If I could ask you to stay right there. So I'm gonna pivot to staff and ask, and I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Vincent or staff, but if, after it leaves the Planning Commission today, the configuration of bedrooms changes, but we still have six units, does that get viewed differently in terms of substantial conformance or being consistent with, I see this reference, the staff report, this term, consistent with the original project?
Madam Chair, I would say no, because it's pretty often we run into this situation where a project is approved at Planning Commission with, might be shown a certain floor plan within a building, and then they very often change. If we are increasing bedrooms, that's more of a concern from a density perspective, at least how we, you know, have calculated variable density up until recently. This project was calculated at density based on bedrooms. So that, we looked at very carefully for this request to make sure that it was still within the required density, and it is, as Mr. Gurrell pointed out, if they did the maximum of six units with three bedrooms, it still could qualify for this size of lot. If they ended up with a couple of two-bedroom units, it wouldn't affect our determination that it's in substantial conformance. We would probably just write a brief memo to the file to that effect. But it also sounds like, from what Mr. Gurrell described, we may still consider those some of three bedrooms technically for how we calculate density. We typically will look at dens as bedrooms unless they're very open to the rest of the unit. And so it could be that we may end up, from staff's perspective, considering some of these more three bedrooms, whereas they may market it as two bedrooms and a den. So it's good to have considered the maximum that they might consider, the three bedrooms in each unit.
Okay, so regardless of the number of bedrooms, are we to just assume the six today? There's been a reduction from eight to six of the units.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Okay. And then, Mr. Gurrell, I think this might be for you. Do we still have 36 parking spaces?
We have 38 now.
You have 38?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that may not have been clear, but that's good to know. Okay, very good. Then on page three of our staff report, there's a reference to the entrance to the property. Is the, is the entrance still exclusively from Olive Mill?
For parking? Yes.
Yes. So both ingress and egress?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. I'm not clear from the plans, and maybe this is back to staff. I know we don't have anybody here from transportation, but how that, if it will be affected at all by what sometimes occurs, which is a queuing up at that stop sign, until we get a roundabout, at that stop sign at Olive Mill and Coast Village. So how, what is the proposal there as to whether or not we'll need to handle that in some way, some other fashion?
I can say that that was a big deal, and that-
Yes, I'm recalling that.
Yeah, and then Associated Transportation Engineers did a study in transportation, and looked it over, and it all works per our transportation engineer and the city transportation's view.
When you say it's been worked out, what, do we have a slide? Can somebody put a slide up and show me how that circulation-
Madam Chair, I think I could help address that question, in that they have an approved project with the configuration shown with the access from Olive Mill Road, as it was shown when Mr. Gurrell went through the plans. And they're not proposing to change that. So it's really not part of the discussion today. They're not asking to change that. They could build the approved project if they wanted to with the driveway in its current location. So we're not really looking at moving that or revising that.
Okay. Okay. I think I understood. Then on page four, we have the proposed revision comparison chart. And I just want to understand, sort of help me align the information in this chart where we have overall square footage. Original 17,270 square feet, net. Proposed change, we have a slight increase, 17,802 square feet net. But then I go back to page one of the staff report, and it says no change to the gross. So it's, it's hard for me to evaluate gross versus net and sort of make it an apples-to-apples understanding of the math. Is there any further explanation you can give to help me bring it together?
Sure. Madam Chair, gross square footage is used by the building department to define the size of the building from the exterior surface of the walls. So it's the gross. It's the biggest number you will see for a building. Net square footage is what we more often use in zoning and planning review to calculate parking. Anything related to square footage for zoning is always net square footage. And that is measured on the interior surface of the exterior walls. So there's always a difference of just the thickness of the walls, where you're gonna see a difference in gross and net. Specifically related to this request, why the net square footage is increasing but the gross square footage is remaining the same is because of how we calculate square footage internal to a floor plan. We only count square footage for stairways and elevators on one floor, on the ground floor. So as that volume continues through the second or third floors, it's like a black hole. It's not counted as square footage. But because they're converting these to flats, they're losing stairways. And so that then becomes covered square footage and is included in the net calculation. So it's a bit of a technicality, but overall, it's not changing the envelope, the maximum envelope building size of gross.
Okay, sort of the exterior footprint, as it were.
Correct.
Okay, that's very helpful. I think for now, those are my questions. I see Mr. Campanella's light on. I'm gonna turn to him. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gurrell. Thank you, Mr. Gurrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
There was a condition to the approved development, that an in-lu fee, housing in-lu fee be paid of $17,000 per residential unit. So would the reduction of units means that inclusionary fee comes down? Or is the absolute amount being paid the same as previously, the total amount?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, it is a fee per unit, so that should come down. And again, it's paid at the time of building permits. So I don't believe we've collected that yet. I'm not sure. So we have not yet collected that fee. So we'll adjust that upon the trigger for that.
A second question, if I can. The zoning, I guess, the application of the number of units that can be built under variable density, correct? That's what's being used here. And that determination is based on parcel size and based on the number of bedrooms you're providing. There's a maximum number of units physically. But there's no restriction really on the square footage of the units within the variable density program. That's subject to architectural review, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Comments?
Yes? I'm going right to comments.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready.
So I'm a little distressed to see people here still today asking about the overall project. I think the project, as staff mentioned, is approved and out the door. In fact, Mr. Fabio's letter says the new design, in bold form, he says the new design is not a significant change. And I would agree with that. I think the project is just a little bit of tweaking. It's unfortunate that the project history has brought it back into a public hearing rather than just putting it through administratively. That was staff's call. But my input would be that there, this project is well within the substantial conformance parameter to just be approved and moved on. Personally, I'm happy to see you adding more parking. I'm always deathly afraid of at-parking levels or new parking matrices. So I'm thankful to see you're adding more parking. I agree wholeheartedly with the addition of that parking going towards residential because I think probably those new bedroom schematics will play into that, or your guests with a larger unit will play into that. So I'm happy to see that. And no slight on the gasoline business, but I think the, the choice of both visual aesthetics and function on that corner of having a gas station versus what's going to be there is going to be great improvement for, for the neighborhood and that area. So I would look forward to passing along positive comments that the determination is made that this substantially conforms. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Comments?
Well, as Mr. Jordan said, this project has been approved. We're looking at how these proposed changes impact that approval. And I would say upfront that from a land use perspective, it substantially conforms to the approved project. The changes that are proposed actually, I think, will improve the project on the ground for the community. The change from a townhouse style to flats, I think, is a market-driven decision and not anything to do with the land use. So it has no real impact to the land use determination. Parking increase, I think, is a good thing. That area is a little bit tight on parking. And having more parking spaces available will be definitely a positive. And I'd also point out, even though it wasn't brought up here, by doing away with the driveways on Coast Village Road for the gas station, I think we pick up two, three, or four parking spaces along Coast Village Road, which is also a positive. So I would recommend that it receive a SCD.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The option of sending this back to ABR is, simply isn't before the planning commission. What is before us is simply does the, this project with these minor changes fit the requirements of a finding of substantial conformance? And I believe that it does. The building's actually slightly less in bulk or mass with the change to the patios. And as my colleagues have said, things like the additional parking and so on is an improvement. So, and the, what happens on the inside really isn't before us either. So I, I can make the substantial conformance findings myself. Thank you.
Mr. Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with my fellow commissioners relative to substantial conformity. Given the land use and the allowed use of the property, I do think there's some relief that's going on relative to the north elevation with the two balconies that came in, that they did voluntarily. And maybe that's a little bit of a win-win visually from the north as well as for the residents of the units. So those are my comments in favor of substantial conformity. I would like to maybe just editorialize one thing. I think when we go through our AUD program later, we might just try to keep some of the variable density projects in mind where there's no limitation on square footage. That, under the AUD, there is, of course. And you'd maybe be getting a few more units under that program on a comparable site. So maybe just, we should compare a little bit to the variable program as well as in-between the various components of AUD. But I think for the particular site and land use conformity, this does substantially comply. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campanella. I'll conclude before we, I don't know that we really need a motion. It's really direction to the community development director. However, I'll just say that our job here today is to make substantial conformance or consistency findings. This is not a de novo hearing, and that's been referenced by some of my colleagues. So to remain within those boundaries, I, too, can find the revised project consistent with and substantially conforming with the original. I want to make some additional comments, if I could, regarding that. Coast Village Road is so impacted on a parking basis that I think that even just the two additional spaces, Mr. Gurrell, that you confirmed, will be part of the revised project, I think, are helpful. We certainly don't, not only Coast Village, but we certainly wouldn't want spillover parking to begin occurring in the neighboring residential area. So I think that's, that's actually a positive from a land use planning and traffic circulation perspective. I think that, you know, we all have our opinions about perhaps a service station versus residential or mixed-use project. And I actually think this will be an improvement, qualitative improvement to that area of the city and neighboring to Montecito. So I think that's a positive. And let me see if I have any final comments here before we move it along. I appreciate comments from the neighbors. I think possibly what we're hearing are either lingering concerns or new concerns that go back to the original process. But that's not what we have before us today. So I hope the public can understand the, the appropriate juncture that the planning commission is in today and where it's going to head next, which I sense is the community development director. So with that, I would entertain either a motion or a consensus direction. Or do you have everything you need, Ms. Brook, from us? And I see Mr. Lawson also nodding. You have what you need from us.
Madam Chair, no. Thank you. We very much appreciate your input, and we don't need a motion or any sort of formal action. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Then I think...
Pass that along to the director.
Yes. Thank you very much. So this meeting is, this item is concluded. Thank you very much. And the planning commission is going to move on to our next item. I'll wait a moment until we have...
Mr. Gurrell, do you want your plans here?
Yes. If Mr. Gurrell would like, or if anybody would like to give Mr. Gurrell copies of the plans.
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gurrell. Okay. While the, the chamber is clearing, we're going to go to our administrative agenda. And that's committee and liaison reports. Do we have a staff hearing officer liaison report today?
We have one-third of one. So I got through the...
Whatever you'd like to share, Mr. Jordan.
I got through the first item yesterday, which was the easiest of the three before I was grabbed away from my computer screen. So just minor modifications. I'll report on the next two, next week, especially the second one, which was actually some work on the Pearl Chase residence. So I was looking forward to hearing and seeing that, but didn't. And then the third item was the Annapawoo and San Pasquale item that we provided some concept review input on across the street from the Boys and Girls Club. So I'll, I'll report next week on the resolution of those two items.
Okay. Very good. Other committee and liaison reports. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Parks and Recreation Commission at their September 24th meeting discussed the YMCA program that's going to be taking over what was El Primo Boxing Center. And they will be in charge of the programming. They went out and did a survey in the community to find out what was wanted. And they're hoping, their goal is to add cultural value to the community. The Alameda, also on the Parks and Recreation agenda was the Alameda Park well, which has to be moved. They, in an attempt to sort of rework it and revitalize it, it started pumping sand instead of water, which was not what we needed this time. And so it's been moved. And that was discussion about the new location. It's further away from Kids World, which is, is good. Historic Landmarks Commission on that same date, September 24th, reviewed, among other things, the new gates for what is the Summer Solstice site, where it used to be the recycling center. And the gates are going to be made by David Shelton. And as you can imagine, they are going to be very whimsical, charming, really representing the spirit of Summer Solstice. But as one of the Historic Landmarks Commissioners said, people are going to be going by and go, "Oh!" And there are going to be more accidents at the corner as a result. So I helped these wrong on that one. And that's, that's all I have to...
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Campanella, committee reports?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the architectural board review, 604 East Cota Street went through its second conceptual review this past week. And on balance, the board likes the unit. There's questions on architectural style to some degree and also some height. Can some of the floors be reduced a little bit, some additional height between floors? And I think this is, I think, the second time that some of the reductions have been made on that. So that, we'll see how the architect comes back. A suggestion might be, I think the staff, staff summary report will be, will be made before it comes back for the next concept review. And maybe one item that might be included in there as a standard would be, based on the units that are being requested under the AUD overlay for this particular site, what the maximum square footage could be if, based on the 29 units that they're requesting. Because the applicant did make an effort to keep it to a two- and three-story building versus a four, based on their submission. And there's a significant amount of square footage that's not being asked for that could have been. So maybe if the review boards know that going in, maybe that might help a little bit when they're reviewing size, bulk and scale feelings that they have. But I think that will not be coming to us. But I, I think that in some architect, based on architectural satisfaction of the design, I think that's going forward pretty much as stipulated as requested. The, Mr. Lamone also did a presentation on the Haley Carter that was given to us. And there were comments made on that. And thank Ms. Brook for giving me the actual guidelines, which I did not have. And I think it might be something for a lunch meeting we may talk a little more about on the Haley Milpiss Design Manual. Commissioner Lodge, who was mayor at the time, so she's well familiar with it. But I think there's a lot of good input in there or things to consider when we look at it. It's a, it's a broader area. It really goes all the way down to the freeway. So there are some good things in here, maybe could be updated based upon some of the uses, the mixed uses that are going on. But I think it's a, I think it's a good starting point. And also looked at, I think one of the suggestions was public parking, more public parking to be done in fingers, let's say, that would service the area, which was also good to see. That was one of the recommendations. So it was interesting if, if you have not seen it in a while or didn't review it, I suggest taking a look at it before we start moving forward. I think there's a lot of good points in here to consider. Then on the downtown parking committee, they, Public Works went through their downtown parking budget update for the next six years. I was impressed by the process. This will be going, if it hadn't gone already, it's going to city council for approval. The way they put it together, I felt, was very interesting. And that first thing that's looked at, what are safety concerns that need to be addressed? And then secondly, what are convenience? And then beyond that, as funds were available, looking out into the, let's say, the last three years of the six-year period, if the funds were available, what other projects would they entertain? And one of interest is looking at solar panel carports on top of the downtown garages. So similar to what's being done at the airport. And I guess with that experience, they feel that's something to really take a look at going forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, committee reports?
Well, a single-family design board hearing this past Monday continues a characteristic of having a long, lengthy meeting. They're getting a lot of projects coming through. And it's been typical for them to have six to eight items on a meeting and last until eight or nine o'clock at night. And that was the way it was Monday. Several projects were of interest to us. If you remember, at our joint meeting with the city council, it was, the issue was raised about projects being built that are not per the approved plans from the design board. And one of the first ones they had this past Monday was a house that was not built to the single-family design board approved plans. It was signed off, construction was signed off by inspection, and it was sold to a new owner who's now come in for changes to the house, specifically to approve a pool. And that was not well-received by the design board. The 3435 Marina Drive project was heard after we had had the land use hearing. The design board specifically thanked the planning commission for working with them to, and with the neighbors, to achieve a better project. So they, they took time out to specifically thank us. They're, they requested the applicant to come back with a full-blown landscape plan because the issues that were raised here and by some of the neighbors about the height of some of the landscaping. And that will return to the full board. It won't be done on consent calendar. Then the one that's really of interest to us, it will be apparently coming to the city council on appeal. It won't be an appeal of our decision, but the San Remo Drive four-unit subdivision with the historic house on it. The applicant has been to the design board several times with a design for Lot Two. They have not done anything yet with Lot One and Four. And the, the design boards told them every time they want to see a smaller house with lowered roof. And they did a little bit, but very little. The neighbors are almost unanimously against it. And so the design board moved to send them back again with direction to reduce the, the bulk and size of the house. And the applicant refused to do it at the meeting in public. And so they ended up rescinding their motion and voted to disapprove and deny the project completely so that the applicant now can go and appeal their decision to the city council. Kind of a strange way to do business, but that seems to be the way they're choosing to do it. And most of the rest of the hearing, the rest of the day was more routine in comparison.
Thank you very much. I'll just announce a couple of calendar items. Looking ahead to October 9th, planning commission will reconvene for a very important concept review. That's of 251 South Hope Avenue. The proposal is a new low-income senior housing project. So for everyone interested in housing, especially housing for seniors, please stay tuned for that. And then follow along on, on our website. We're going to have a public workshop currently scheduled for October 23rd, late afternoon into early evening on 22nd, excuse me, the following day the commission will hear it. On the evening, the afternoon evening of the, of the 22nd at the Faulkner Gallery against, you can follow along the city web... you can follow along the city website for specific times, but the Planning Commission will be there, and we're encouraging the public to come and interact with us and staff on the housing element portion of our general plan that is making its way through back up to the State of California Housing and Community Development Department for certification early next year. With that, if there are no other staff announcements of any type at this point, I think our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.